Oh, okay, great. Hello, everybody. Today is Monday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. This evening, we have had several exciting events occur. First was a five o'clock finance committee meeting. Then we had a six P M. call to order an executive session. And now at seven twelve, we are calling our official meeting to order. First up on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. I'll give you a motion. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Next up, we have the manager's report. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, counsel. Evening, folks. I have a number of items I'd like to update you on this evening. Project updates are always an exciting way to begin manager's report, and I have a number of them for you this evening. The roundabout engineering has been awarded to LBJ Engineering. They were also previously known as Girl Palmer, so it's the same team that has been there since the beginning, that was awarded by the state. The project is moving forward with the timeline as follows, at least provided by the Maine D O T. Engineering will take place over the course of the next year. Project design and review would then follow for the year after that. And then final plan specifications and price estimates complete by September of twenty-eight and advertised for construction in October of that year with construction forecast to begin in the spring of twenty-nine. So that's Maine D O T.'s most recent chronology of what they're looking to do with the roundabout on the west side. The town has learned some great news. We will be awarded an N P I or Municipal Partnership Initiative for Route one hundred from Maine D O T. We had been working with them, as you recall, and some work to lower Route one hundred by the intersection with Range Road to make it safer over there, because there's a bit of a, there's a significant blind spot, as well as just south of Methodist Road, to lower the grade there as well, because there's a peek-a-boo spot after that as well. So looking to do that. Contract should be coming from Maine D O T. to the town for action in January, and that will give us a longer window of time within which to do the engineering, finalize the engineering, and go out to bid and to get that work done. But the significance of this N P I grant is that it will double the amount of funding for the project. So the town had six hundred thousand dollars put aside for improvement, and that would add an additional six hundred thousand dollars to it to make the project ultimately closer one point two million project. That would result in significant safety improvements of that segment of Route one hundred that currently is a high crash location, and it'd be removing two visual barriers due to the grading of the road in addition to other safety and pedestrian improvements. So look forward to that at the start of the year, but that's great news. The solar expansion project that was a much discussion at our most recent council meeting is advancing with the town attorney is reviewing the contracts for acceptability. We'll complete that this week and get it back to revision and keep that moving forward. They're working on safe, when I say they, I'm sorry, revision is working on safe harboring the equipment and to get that lined up so we can take advantage of the current tax incentives that expire at the end of the year. And their development team will be working on the other background details on connection, site plan review, environmental and other approvals for the project. So that is advancing. The town has been, in other good financial news, has been notified that we will be a recipient of the Small Harbor Improvement Project Grant. So remember, we talked about that roughly about a year ago. So the ship has come in. Pardon the pun. This is, the grant will assist the town in the Broad Cove Pier Expansion Project that they approved us to move forward with last year. The town will have a match that we'll have for discussion during this upcoming fiscal year budget discussion, but the estimated cost of the project is roughly two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, of which the town will be responsible for about half of that. Now, a large portion of thanks should be directed to Chief Rumsey and the Coastal Waters Commission for their work on this project and application, which they took, Maine D O T. took a note of stating that it was an excellent application process and what they thought was a great project. So they're very enthusiastic about it. Upcoming social events are in the works. Pardon the phrase, but there's going to be a Junk in the Trunk event at the library. It is not what you are thinking. On September twenty-seventh, from eight, nine A M. to one P M. at the Prince Memorial Library, if you have some opportunity to clear your house of clutter and perhaps free cycle items there. You can come right over and take advantage of it. So if you do like to participate with your trunk, then you will have to register, and so they can take care of that. But if you want to come and be a bargain hunter, there is no registration required. So that's a program that is offered in collaboration with North Yarmouth Waste Reduction Committee. And for more information, you can go to the Prince Memorial Library's website, but that's on the twenty-seventh of September. Active Living will be holding a property tax stabilization and partial deferment information session on September seventeenth from eleven thirty to twelve thirty here in the council chambers for those who'd like to have more information on that program. Staff is also working on scheduling a new resident open house for the month of October. So we're working on trying to find the proper dates and times for that, and I'll have an update for the council at the next council meeting. And I'd like to provide another reminder to folks, because this is important, important service, I spoke about two council meetings ago, but the following events will be coming up, upcoming in October, and all will be held at the Public Works Facility at twenty-three Drown Road. And that would be starting with Universal Waste Drop Off, which is electronics and such, on October eleventh. Bulky Item Drop Off will be on October eighteenth, and then they'll also have a document shredding and disposal event on October twenty-fifth. So those three weeks in October are going to be busy over at twenty-three Drown Road.
What was the date for Junk in the Trunk?
That is September twenty-seventh. And then finally, Town Hall and Prince Memorial Library will open late at ten A M. on Thursday, September eighteenth. Staff will be attending safety training on that day, provided by the P D. And that's what I have for this evening's manager's report.
Very exciting stuff. Junk, maybe. No, it's not junk. Thank you so much. We should send you on vacation more often. Just kidding. Actually, no, I'm not kidding. Okay, cool beans. Moving, oh, wait, does anyone have any questions or comments for Matt? No, okay. All right, we will go into public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under New Business for further council discussion. Is there anyone here that would like to come up during public discussion and chat with us? Come on up if you would just mind reminding us of where you live and your name for the folks at home.
Christopher Yale, two forty-four Greeley Road.
Thank you.
I want to thank you guys for, two weeks ago, hosting the meeting on L D eighteen twenty-nine. It was very informative to the lawyer here, and there's still a lot of questions about it. But I want to totally disagree with Mr. Counselor Eads of what he stated at the end about the state stepping in to try to change some zoning. The last zoning change here in Cumberland, according to Mr. Longley, as I spoke with him, was nineteen eighty-four or eighty-five, when they tried to change the zoning from four to two acres, which I guess people just didn't want. So, you know, it's, so that's, we're going on forty years. So as the representative said, the state is looking at eighty thousand units short of housing. It's probably just stepping in saying, we've got to do something. And the town of Cumberland's saying, no. You know, we don't want small lots, or we don't want the neighborhood like Main Street or the roads off of Main Street with all those small houses. I mean, everyone loves those neighborhoods and stuff, but they're smaller lots. So I just, I just think it's, it is too bad that the town doesn't allow or wouldn't allow before this someone to break off a small piece of property to try to build a smaller house. An A D U, I don't consider affordable housing. You're building an apartment on your property, and it's expensive, and it's expensive to build, as Counselor Vale said. You know, you're getting up to five hundred dollars a square foot, depending on how you do things. So, you know, A D Us, they think are for relatives or family and all that, but once they're gone, or your parent, you did it for your parents or something like that, you're becoming a landlord. And I've been a landlord for forty, forty-five years, and sometimes it doesn't work out, and you still have that nut to pay. But when the tenant's not paying, the bank still wants their money. And it took me, and I tried to be nice to this person, it took me almost six months to get her evicted. And at the end of it, this was fifteen years ago, I was out fifty-five hundred dollars, just gone. Oh, thank you. I'll see you later. So, I mean, this might allow someone to break off a piece of property and allow someone just to own it, you know? It's just like an A D U. You're almost taking five thousand square feet for an A D U, really, for the spacing, the parking and all that. But this would allow someone to actually own it. And you could still do that for, say, your kids or something like that, not do an A D U., but I could still break off this piece for them, and then it's going to help them. We all know the difference between Reddit renting on your credit score and owning something and actually owning it. And so it's just going to allow, you know, just allow more affordable stuff. And, you know, I also want to say, it allows you to own a piece in Cumberland, that we all like Cumberland a lot, and, you know, that's why we live here. So it also might allow somebody who owns a bigger piece of property to say, I can start selling off a few smaller pieces, but I can't, if I have four acres, I can't sell anything off, and maybe I could sell off, you know, some smaller pieces so I can afford my taxes. I can afford to stay in my house, which we all want to do. And maybe that allows them to be able to, you know, afford that new tax bill that we all just got, which we all saw the increase, and we all know more increases are coming. The valuation's not done yet, so it's all going to go up. So thank you for hosting all of that. I think there was a lot of people freaking out, like, oh, my God, I live out in Range Road, there's going to be all affordable housing out there, and that's not going to happen. It's going to take time for this, just because it gets passed, it's going to take a few years before this all plays out. So I just want to state that, and, you know, thank you, guys, and thank you for hosting that. Thank you for setting that up. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for being here. I know you're up next on the agenda, Mr. Parent, but is there anything you would like to contribute during public discussion? No, okay. All right, we will then close public discussion and move on to legislation and policy. As part of legislation and policy per Article Two, Section Seven of the Town Charter, there is an opportunity for public comment on each item on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Twenty-five dash zero nine three to hear a presentation from Don Parent, re a citizen, Citizen Climate Lobby Resolve on Reduction of C O two Emissions. Thank you for preparing us a beautiful visual. We love presentations, ones with beautiful pictures even more. Welcome, and over to you, Don. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for having me.
Oh, our pleasure. Are you, Whitney, you've got the, you're going to put us in presentation mode? Yes, amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. As I said, thank you for having me. I really appreciate it. And the reason I'm here, I spoke during the public session a few months ago, a number of months ago, I guess. I'm still at it. I am part of a group called the Citizens Climate Lobby. And what the group does, and by the way, do I forward it?
Pardon me?
Do I forward it?
Yeah, you can just hit the spacebar.
Yeah, so let's see here. Hey, it works. Okay. So who is the Citizens Climate Lobby? It's a nationwide group. So the citizen, it's a nonprofit, nonpartisan grassroots advocacy climate change organization focused on national policy to address national global climate crisis. So the issue there is that the reason I'm part of this is because climate change, regardless of whatever may be happening politically, nationwide, whatever, worldwide, it's still happening. Physically, it's a reality. And none of us, and by the way, I should also say that I am from Cumberland, I live on Vining Way. And I got involved in this when, after thirty years after graduate school, I was, I'm an engineer, and I work in the thermosciences. And I had a class back in nineteen eighty that kind of freaked me out about climate change. This is nineteen eighty when people were talking about, oh, it's going to freeze, we're going to do this. No, the science seems pretty solid. And so I got involved, and in a small way. But here I am in front of the people here, you people, principally because if you look at this, the cost of climate change on public infrastructure is getting bigger and better and worse, and that's not a good thing. But that isn't the only issue, but that's just a starting point. But who's this organization? Number one, it's bipartisan. We have Republicans, we have Democrats, we have independents, all part of this group because we're all practical people. I'm a small business owner, and the last thing I want is more regulation. So let me move on. We consist of over two hundred thousand supporters nationwide, there's six hundred chapters. We have an annual meeting in D C. A lot of people here from Maine went to D C. and participated in this meeting. That's a picture from this year. And actually, you may have noticed Susannah Hancock's picture. She's the woman who is going to be hiking and doing some work in the Arctic in the Portland Press Herald, the Maine Sunday Telegram. She's part of our group as well. So we're focused on three things. We try to keep it simple. Carbon pricing, because if you put a price on carbon, you address not just, is it a windmill, or is it a solar panel, or is it an electric car? It's using the power of the marketplace to try to address the issue of high emissions of fossil fuel-based carbons into the atmosphere. And the problem with that, with pricing carbon, has always been that it's not really, it's not fair for people who have really low incomes because they still have to drive to work. And so there's an idea that it was emerged, it was developed by Republican lawmakers called Carbon Cash Back. It was actually called Carbon Fee and Dividend. But the idea is to basically put a fee on carbon as it enters the market and return a hundred percent of that fee, or near a hundred percent of that fee, back to all American adults. And that's been analyzed significantly, and it's pretty positive. And then the last thing is, and I'm sure you've all heard of this, is bipartisan comprehensive permitting reform. We're working, in our meetings in D C. this year, a lot of the focus was on permitting reform. It's got to get better because things take way too long. But our ask today, and this is why I'm here, there is an ask in all of this, in that the support by the town council to sign a resolution to indicate that the whole idea of carbon cash back, playing, putting a fee on carbon emissions, or actually, carbon in principle, and returning that money near a hundred percent to American citizens is a good idea, and I'll, I'll explain why. This is, by the way, from the University of Maine Climate Change Institute, so this is Maine-based data, but showing a national trend. What you see here is, the red line is the surface air temperature on Earth, and the dash black lines are, well, they go back to seventy-nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and twenty. Things are still heating up. There's definitely a consistent, steady rate of rise in the climate temperature. And if you go back to this, which is important to Cumberland, which is the ocean temperatures, and you can see the red line, and again, from the University of Maine, the yellow line or gold line is from last year, the red line is from this year, we're still very high. Ocean temperatures are high and going up fast. C O two concentration in the atmosphere as measured at Manaloa in Hawaii. It's still, it's rising monotonically. It's getting worse and worse and worse. Four hundred and twenty ppm currently. Jim Hansen, the climate scientist, was warning us in nineteen eighty-eight that we shouldn't exceed three fifty, and we've kind of blown by that. So it's now fifty percent higher than pre-industrial levels. Now, economists think or feel, and I happen to agree, and I think most people do, that from the standpoint of an economist, she says, the most efficient way to tackle climate change is to tax emissions, to create a disincentive to emit C O two, and the marketplace is the way to do that. So three, thirty-six hundred U S. economists have signed a letter stating the support for that thesis. Twenty-seven Nobel laureates, lots of people smarter than me have agreed that this is a valid thing to do. And these two guys, Jim Baker and George Schultz, part of the old Bush, Bush forty-one administration, they're the ones who decide, who developed this whole idea. They realized that if you're ever going to get any type of pricing done on carbon that is fair for everybody, that you need to return that money back to the people. And so they also founded the Climate Leadership Council with people like Ray Dalio and Stephen Chu and Ben Bernanke. So there's a lot of heavy hitters behind this idea, but it hasn't happened yet. So basically, it's revenue neutral, doesn't add to the deficit, whatever comes in goes back out, but it's, it's neutral. The fee is, yes, applied to the companies that actually mine carbon-based fuel, carbon-based materials, whether it's oil or coal or whatever, and that money is sent back to everybody equally, and there's a border adjustment tariff or tax, I guess you could call it, to non-carbon taxing countries. Now, that's important, actually, for Maine, because, for example, lobsters from Maine get shipped to Europe. Lobsters from Canada get shipped to Europe. They apply a tariff, the Europeans will apply a tariff to the lobsters from Maine. Anything made here in Maine and gets sent back internationally will get tariffed by the Europeans and any other country that does have a carbon fee and dividend kind of scheme. And so this is what's going on in the world, and every country with a color has some type of price on carbon, whether it's carbon fee and dividend, whether it's some straight old carbon pricing. I think Europe is, just applies a price, and that's it. China as well, that's usually surprising to a lot of people, but yeah, China does impose a price on carbon, and Australia as well. So, and then if, a little bit more detail on that, forty countries already tax carbon fuels. Sweden has the highest price, and Canada has expanded it to a nationwide carbon fee and dividend scheme. This is important. Ninety-six members of the U S. House, including Shelley Pingree, and I believe Jared Golden, but I'm not sure about that, and forty-nine U S. senators support this idea. As a matter of fact, during the last, the last Biden budget, we had, we came one vote short of having this pass as part of the, as part of the I R A. And so that's us right there. And so it is effective. So this is what happened in Britain when they applied a price to carbon. Emissions fell by sixty-one percent in six years. This is, yeah, it's, it's old data, admittedly old data, but it is, it is data nonetheless. It seems to work. And so here's the mechanism. Energy companies pay a rising fee on every ton of carbon from wells or mines or whatever. The U S. Treasury, so they pay that money to the Treasury, the Treasury writes checks to people, it goes to people, everybody gets their check, not unlike what happened in COVID, where everybody was getting money in their accounts magically. And the result is, it stimulates the demand for lower-cost products. In other words, when people get that money in their accounts, they don't say, oh, my God, I'm going to go buy more gas for my car. That's not what they typically say. Economists have found that they'll use it to buy food for their kids or to go out, whatever. So it changes, it changes the mix, and that's basically how it works. Now, relative to equity, this has also been studied by the, by the economist groups, and up to the third quintile, I can't, number three, the third quintile, people generally do better. In the first quintile, only one percent of the people get hurt at all. In the second quintile, seventy-seven percent, and really, in the third quintile, seventy-six percent of the people who are receiving the checks are actually doing better economically than before climate fee, carbon fee and dividend was introduced. So it is positive. And from a Maine perspective, it was analyzed, and up to the seventieth decile, people would actually do better financially if this idea was implemented. Of course, if you're in the hundredth, the ninetieth or hundredth percentile, it starts to cost you a little money. So what we ask, that's the reason I'm here, is that we have thirty-one towns and cities in Maine that have signed up so far. Portland, South Portland, Cape Elizabeth, Freeport, Saco, people are talking to Yarmouth. But we, we hope that we could get the town of Cumberland to be on this list and support a resolution. And why is that important? It's important to show our delegation that Maine supports, that the population supports, and that the towns support implementing a fee that helps address the issue of climate change. And that would put us back even with the world, because right now, we're the And so, it is effective. So this is what happened in Britain when they applied a price to carbon. Emissions fell by 61% in six years. This is, yeah, it's old data, admittedly old data, but it is, it is data nonetheless. It seems to work. And so, here's the mechanism. Energy companies pay a rising fee on every ton of carbon from wells or mines or whatever. The US Treasury, so they pay that money to the Treasury. The Treasury writes checks to people. It goes to people, everybody gets their check. Not unlike what happened in COVID, where everybody was getting money in their accounts magically. And the result is, it stimulates the demand for lower-cost products. In other words, when people get that money in their accounts, they don't say, "Oh my God, I'm going to go buy more gas for my car." That's not what they typically say. Economists have found that they'll use it to buy food for their kids, or to go out, whatever. So it changes, it changes the mix. And that's basically how it works. Now, relative to equity, this has also been studied by the economist groups. And up to the third quintile, I can't, number three, the third quintile, people generally do better. In the first quintile, only 1% of the people get hurt at all. In the second quintile, 77%. And really, in the third quintile, 76% of the people who are receiving the checks are actually doing better economically than before climate fee, carbon fee and dividend was introduced. So, it is positive. And from a Maine perspective, it was analyzed, and up to the 70th decile, people would actually do better financially if this idea was implemented. Of course, if you're in the 100th, the 90th or 100th percentile, it starts to cost you a little money. So, what we ask, that's the reason I'm here, is that we have 31 towns and cities in Maine that have signed up so far. Portland, South Portland, Cape Elizabeth, Freeport, Saco. People are talking to Yarmouth. But we, we hope that we could get the town of Cumberland to be on this list and support a resolution. And why is that important? It's important to show our delegation that Maine supports, that the population supports, and that the towns support implementing a fee that helps address the issue of climate change. And that would put us back even with the world, because right now, we're the laggard. And that's it. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Don?
Can I ask? What does signing on entail, right? So like you're saying, 31 cities and towns have signed on so far. So like, signing on, like, does that mean you're interested in committing to it? What is, what is?
I have a, I have some draft resolutions. I have one for Cumberland, I can give it to you. But basically, says that we support this idea. There's no commitment from the town, other than to say, "Yeah, we listen, we heard, we've researched this. We think it's a good idea. We think that the US government should support and do something like this."
Gotcha. Oh, sorry. I think the, just a heads up. Don, you also presented to the Lands and Conservation Commission, right? And they, they've given their stamp of approval on this for us to consider as well. So thank you for, for taking that step. Is there anyone from the public that might want to comment on this agenda item?
Go ahead.
Please.
You stated this is a carbon thing, and a lot of it said, you know, there's going to be a price on oil and energy.
What is that?
So. Are this going to cause our rates to go up? We're going to pay more for electricity, and you say we're going to get it back in the check. So, a power company's not going to do this for free. They're going to get taxed, it's going to get passed on. We already pay the highest electricity rates almost in the nation. So, is this going to, you say we're going to get a check back in the mail?
Well, or it just pops into your account.
Okay. What's the percentage, is my electricity goes up and then I get a check in the mail? Now, am I going to get a, you say this is going to help? I mean, what are we talking? $5 or $150?
Just into the mic, Don, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
In principle, it's, if you, it depends on which decile you fall in, right?
What income you fall in.
Yeah, yeah. But if you're the average person, you're going to get more back in your check, then you're going to pay extra in fuel costs or electricity costs. That's the, that's the idea. And that's been, it's been studied, it's been, it works really well in Canada and in the other countries that have implemented it. And it's just one way of trying to shift us a little bit away from oil into something else. That's it. Thank you.
Council questions or comments?
I got all kinds of comments.
Yeah, get in there. Go for it.
You know, we, I value clean air. We spent two hours at the previous meeting going over legislation that was complete. And right now, we're looking at something basically from 50,000 feet and putting this town's name on it, so to say. What scares me about this is, when you look at this carbon tax at $15 a ton, escalating $10 a ton a year, that's a substantial increase. And obviously, the point behind that's to drive change. Totally understand that. There's a couple of things, I know a few things about, and there's a lot I don't. And, but one of them's diesel engines and diesel engine emissions, and the replacement for diesel engines. And honestly, the replacement's hydrogen. But they've built the engine, the engine exists. The issue is safely storing the fuel in a mine site with dynamite. The two really aren't the nicest combination. So, kind of like what Mr. Yale said, you're going to put this tax on these mining companies, and we're all going to pay for it. We're going to pay for it in our cell phones, we're going to pay for it in our computers, we're going to pay for it in lithium for your, for a Tesla battery. You can't get away from it. So, I mean, it's, in theory, it's, it's an idea to drive change, but you can't rush the safety behind it, and that's the delay. And I mean, with the tier four emissions that we have in the United States, you know, you can't, if this was 1997, and you're driving technology from 97 to 2025, you could reduce a lot of emissions in a hurry. But basically, at the end, where we are today, that engine needs to go away and be replaced with a hydrogen engine. And that's the answer, but you've got to store the fuel safely. So I mean, this is, this is going to be expensive fast, and it's going to hit all of us, so.
I can't disagree with what you were just saying. You know, you're right. You know, it kind of pushes us away from that. But that doesn't mean that diesel fuel won't be around for a long, long time. Plus, there's one other thing, too. There's also biofuels, right? There's a lot of people working on biofuels that may substitute diesel, fossil fuel-based diesel fuel. So that may eventually, in time, replace diesel fuel. But we'll see. But the, but you're right. The incentive is to make that change happen. The problem is, of course, we can't keep putting CO2 up there because that's not going to manifest well either, you know?
I don't disagree with what you're saying at all, Mr. Parent. It's just, when you have other countries that haven't adopted the same emission standards as the United States, and you take the stuff that we view as secondhand junk, it ends up in Africa, and that's the stuff that's putting the high pollutants in the air.
Yeah. It's, it's true, and it's acknowledged, right? The whole idea is to get to net zero emissions someday, right?
Yeah.
By 2050 or something, right? But that's net zero. That doesn't mean everything goes away. It means as long as we net out to zero, we're okay, you know? So there'll still be diesel fuel around, I expect.
Other comments?
There's no action anticipated here, if I'm correct.
You, you are correct. I just wanted to, we also have a resolution in front of us, so I think that if we wanted to take some action, we, we could. I would just be curious to know what people think. As Mr. Parent is here and has given us his time, and this is his second time being up on the dais as to whether or not, I think it's reasonable to ask if, you know, folks would like to consider adopting a resolution, or if we would like to take a beat and digest it a little bit more, and.
Like Jeff said, it was a good, like, high-level view. I'm looking through the carbon cash back for Maine.org website, and some of these references are dead links. So I'm going to need to track those down and do my own research in addition to what is here. There's a lot of resources and studies about climate change in general. I, I understand that fully. My main thing is, I need to myself learn more about the system itself, the credits, how that's working, the fees, and how that all plays out. And looking at what it is in reality, like, logistically, how it works in other places, so I can have a handle on what we're talking about here, fully. But I appreciate the overview and all the information presented so far.
Sounds reasonable to me.
I think kind of just what I was getting at earlier with asking the question about what happens next is like, with the resolve, we say we implement the resolve, then what happens? What happens after that?
That resolve gets basically communicated to the congressional delegation.
But then, so then, we're just essentially buying into a theory, and then like, maybe in a couple of years, this would be implemented, is what I'm getting?
Yeah, you know, there is, there's, if there's a, there are passive bills. Like, I think it's House 5744. If you want to read the bill, you can just download it. I think it's HR 5744.
Okay. So more so understanding, like, what is the runway? Like, what is the timeline? We buy into this resolve, then it goes into higher powers, and then maybe in 10 years, this is something that's implemented?
It's sort of like, to me, the same thing as the Rails to Trails resolution. It's basically like, you're saying, "I like this idea. Please, my legislators on my behalf, go do something in this regard." It's, it's just us saying, "Yeah, we think it's a good idea." "Please pursue, if you'd like."
All right. I just wanted to make sure I'm tracking.
So there is a new bill that's being introduced in the House. And it hasn't been introduced yet, but it is. So the last one is 5744, there's a new one. It's probably not going to go anywhere this year, right? Or next year, but we'll see. And, but if we don't try, we're never going to get it.
Yeah.
Right? So, that's why we're here.
I think if you paid attention last, last, last meeting there, we put our money where our mouth was. We, we expanded our solar field up here, and, you know, I think that's an action item that all of us got behind, and we all can support. And this is a little bit more nebulous, if you will. And it's not that I don't support climate change, or efficiencies, or anything like that. And you're absolutely right that we have to, if you will, get on with it and stop talking about it. I'm just a little uncomfortable looking at this tonight and trying to figure out what it, what it means to us and what it, you know, you know, when you say, "I'm going to make a statement," I'll, yeah, we're going to make a statement, but where does it go from there? And I think that's a piece that I'm not fully understanding. And like, as you said, a little more research, but.
That is a little vague, I have to admit. It really is. It's basically a statement that 31, to say Susan Collins, 31 towns in state of Maine representing a large fraction of the state, because they're populous towns, think that this is a good idea. Maybe you should vote yes. And actually, she's very influential because she's on the Climate Solutions Caucus. And actually, relative to the state of Maine compared to other states, we have more people on the Climate Solutions Caucus than any other state. So we have a fair amount of influence.
Okay, I mean, oh, Mike, please.
Don, first, I just want to thank you for coming in tonight.
You're very welcome.
Very, very well presented, and even though I'm going to disagree with signing on to the resolution, I, I do want to know, and I mean this sincerely, I appreciate your presentation tonight. I just can't put my signature to anything that's going to cost a state like Maine that is so heavily dependent on fuels, fossil fuels, whether it's in the forestry industry, paper industry, you've got construction. Jeff talked about it earlier. Ultimately, the, everybody here is going to be paying more money. And I can't put my signature to that, but that's where I am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Can I just comment on that? There are people who know more about that particular point than I do, but as I understand it, because of the way this is structured, this would be a net financial benefit for the state of Maine in general because of the nature of our economy. It's a resource-based economy, and I don't exactly know the mechanics of how all that works, but the economists that have looked at it have said that Maine would come out much better off financially, not much better off, but incrementally better off financially with this kind of scheme than other states.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I guess I, I kind of feel like if folks want to take some time and digest, and then we can always revisit, kind of based on our independent research. I sometimes feel a little uneasy about weighing, we don't often weigh in on federal matters. I mean, that's the nice thing about doing what we do here at the municipal level, is we don't run on a ticket, right? We are, we are here as nonpartisan actors. And so for me, sometimes it's like, ooh, you know, once you begin to engage at a federal, is that something that we, that I personally want to do in a municipal position? Maybe not, and I just want to kind of mull that over a little bit personally. That's kind of where I am, so. Okay, so if there's kind of consensus, we'll digest this a little bit more, do a little bit more research, keep in touch with you, Don. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Thank you for the time you spent with the LCC. This is a beautiful presentation, and we will be in touch.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Yeah, our pleasure. Okay, next up, 25-094, to authorize the issuance of Senior Property Tax Assistance Program payments. I've heard this is one of the best days of the year to be able to work with the, the folks in our community and present them with, or help them with their tax burden. Just for folks at home to qualify for the Property Tax Assistant Program, you should be 70 years of age or older, have a homestead in Cumberland, and have been a resident for at least 10 years, and your household, combined household income does not exceed $91,000. And it looks like 182 residents qualified for the program, and the refunds total $97,636. This is, before we go into council discussion, or, Mr. Manager, is there anything I missed?
No, ma'am. Perfect summarization, thank you.
Okey dokey. Would anyone like, for the public, like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, we'll close public comment and go into council discussion.
Matt, just a quick question on this. It says 182 residents qualified. Is that, 182 residents actually qualified, but, you know, only some portion of that, you know, applied? Or is that 182 people applied and met the qualifications? Do you see the difference of?
There are very few who apply who don't, who don't meet the qualifications. So I think if we had 182 apply, there may have been a handful that may not have qualified just due to either one, either not meeting one of the standards, either being, you know, under 70, or less than, less than 10 years residency, or may have been above the income threshold. So, but generally, most that apply do, do receive benefits.
Do we have any records that would allow us, and maybe we already do this, to target people that, you know, have been here for at least 10 years, you know, meet the qualifications? The income one is going to be the hardest one because we don't, you know, get into people's individual taxes, but that's target and send out specifically to say, hey, like, you might qualify. I wouldn't get the letter because I'm not 70 yet.
You're not?
No, a few more years. But we target, instead of, you know, just sort of like stuff in the crier and hoping that they see it, but really getting out and saying, hey, you know, you homeowner at 123 Main Street, whatever, you might qualify for this. Please see if you do.
I know Whitney can talk about a lot of the outreach on that as well. And then, I know we did have one session about maybe three weeks before we had scheduled for over Valhalla at the Recreation Center, that Devon was there for, and Jen Dode and I were there. Unfortunately, no one else showed, so we waited, but, but then, you know, you get a lot of repeat customers. So they do an outreach as far as, you know, mailing to, you know, to previous applicants as well to make sure they didn't, even those who didn't qualify, just to make sure. So, and Whitney can talk about the rest of the outreach that's done.
Yeah. So I've been working with this program since I started here in 2019, and we compile a spreadsheet of everybody that's qualified for it and come in and applied before. We send a mailing to all of them in the beginning of July, letting them know that this is happening in August. So whether or not they've come in in the last couple of years, we just send a reminder sheet with the qualifications and an application on it. Then we just host open hours, the first or second week in August, so that people can come in and ask questions. As far as I know from sitting through those, that 182, I think you said, are all people that applied and qualified. I think we had two people come in during the open hours that didn't qualify, and they both came in knowing that they'd made too much money, but they'd qualified before, so they just wanted to double-check. They'll still get a letter next year, so if income has changed, then they can come back in and. They'll still get a letter next year, so if income has changed, then they can come back in and will qualify again. I think, so we, we advertise in the crier, we put something in the forecaster, which I know isn't hard copy anymore. We talk about it, Devin has it at the luncheon, we bring applications different places, we have the applications out front, so we kind of put it everywhere we possibly can. But we do have a lot, I mean, it's two hundred people almost that qualify consistently every year. When we put out other information, we try to slide it in there too, so that people know that it exists. A lot of them talk about it, Devin brings it to Hawthorne Court and different places to make sure that they know about it too.
Sounds like you're pretty thorough to me, yes Denise?
I know at one point, I think I had asked, sort of along the same lines, like do we know in town, not just the people who have applied before, but in town in general, like the demographics wise, age, how long you've lived here, and then what our participation rate and typically, I think you had said that rates pretty high for the amount of people in town who may qualify that haven't before. So do we have that information on how many households we think are in that demographic? To know that we're having like high participation rates? I'm just curious, because I mean, it's a lot, you do a lot of outreach, I'm thinking of people who still don't see any of that, you know? Like literally here, I'm sending this to your house, like, that kind of thing, and if we even, even have that information.
Yeah, we, we don't have it like hard copy wise. I think in comparison to other towns that I've seen for the numbers, I think it is a high level of participation, about maybe thirty percent more than what I've seen in other, other communities. And there's only so many towns that do, do this also. But it's something we could take a look at, I know the demographics are pretty, you know, we can, we can take a look at that and kind of, I guess, measure that against what these census numbers show, what we have for that, for that range.
Okay, cool.
Can I just add, sorry, one thing, just for knowing how we've done it over the years, the one thing that we've struggled with is the income part, because we don't have that information, but I will say, we have multiple towns that have reached out over the last five years or so that have tried to implement programs based on what we've been doing. So, you know, I know that, like Bob has, or Councilor Vail has been on the Senior Tax Committee since I started here and we've had many conversations about what the income threshold is, that sort of thing. Other towns are seeing what we're doing and have certainly reached out to get all of our information and try to implement the same thing. So, it's really a great program, I one hundred percent say it's my favorite day to come to work all year long because you get to tell people how much money you're giving them and it's a great feeling.
Thank you. There's no other council discussion. Take a motion. I'll give you a motion. I move to authorize the issuance of Senior Property Tax Assistance Program payments.
I'll give you a second.
Oh, thanks for showing up, Jeff.
No problem.
Uh, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
I'll just throw out a comment, you know, anything that we do to help our long-term
Yeah, I agree.
aging population is, is not only beneficial to them, but it is a reflection of the values that we have as a community. And so this is, you know, it's not much, but it's, it's something, so we should be proud of that fact and strive to do more.
Amen, Bob. Did anyone sign up for the deferment program?
It's still, still open, Madam Chair, but we have had, I think, three or four different applicants that have expressed interest, so.
Interesting, I think, could you keep us posted on?
I definitely will, definitely will, as we, as we get to that point.
Awesome sauce. Okay, we have a motion in a second, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Great, okay, next up is twenty-five dash zero-nine-five, to consider and act on moving the October thirteenth Town Council meeting to October sixth in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? There is no one from the public who would like to comment on this, okay, council discussion. I'll give you a motion, yeah, did you have something to say, Bob? No, okay.
I do, but I can wait till after you break the motion.
Well, go ahead, Bob.
You know, every time we move the date, it affects something else. And so, you know, it's a Lions Club meeting, I'd rather not move the date, so, but it really doesn't matter. I think we should just, you know, keep to our dates and with a calendar and be done with it. If it happens to land on a holiday, so be it.
Do we look at, like, you know, every time we meet for the first time in our new, well, soon to be maybe fiscal year, when we start this year and we lay out the schedule, I'm assuming we're looking at holidays and already moving it, so that we don't have to make tweaks?
Our, our process is, so we have to take action on it, but one of the things that we've tried to do, because we've also met on holidays like Rosh Hashanah and like, like things where, we, we also want to be respectful of people's traditions, even if they may not be ones that impact us individually as counselors. It also impacts people in the public who may not want to come for public comment because they're at home celebrating with their families. So we do try to, at the beginning of the year, we do try to, and as does the school, move meetings so that we are consistent with the federally and sometimes more locally recognized holidays, religious and cultural. Count Hoss. Yes, Mr. Sturgis.
Madam Chair, to Counselor Thorson's question, when I provided the council with the proposed meeting schedule this summer, actually had, the last line said, council may want to alter the schedule in October and May due to holidays. And it was October thirteenth and the other one is Memorial Day.
Well.
With the service advance.
We're going to cancel the parade this year because we're going to have our council meetings.
Happy to meet on Memorial Day.
Tell you what, I'll even have the grill fired up in the parking lot before.
I'd be happy to write you a doctor's note to the Lions Club, Bob.
Sometimes we have interesting speakers there.
Sometimes.
About interesting speakers here.
That's true.
Bob, don't you want to see me?
Well, I'd like to get them both.
Alright, enough discussion. Alright, we'll call, we'll call for, wait, did we get a motion?
I was paused, but I'll give you a motion.
Oh, Matt.
They just needed a second, I had Counselor Douglas down for the motion, but I didn't have a second yet.
I think I have to read it, don't I? Go for it. I move to reschedule the October thirteenth Town Council meeting to October sixth in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Second. Alright, we have a motion in a second, any discussion on the motion?
It was done very well, you should be a voice actress.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
It's been a week, it's only Monday. Someone might want to.
Oh my God, is it really?
What?
It's only Monday.
Alright, peanut gallery, pipe down. Twenty-five dash zero-nine-six, to set a public hearing date of September twenty-second to consider and act on proposed amendments to Article Two Town Council, Section Five, induction of council into office of the town charter. Just a reminder for the folks at home, this is to set a date for a public hearing, but we've talked about, actually, Mr. Vail, this is one of your, your favorite initiatives, do you want to talk about this? You want to tee this up, or would you like me to?
I think it's, 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 it doesn't need a lot of explanation, it, it just basically says that the term of a counselor is, is three years, it starts on July first or the, the next council meeting. And in the past, the, the confusion was that it started the day after the election. Well, people typically weren't sworn in for maybe a two-week period, depending on where the calendar lined up. So I think this is more conducive to people knowing that their, their three years begins on the first day of the calendar of July first and runs three, three years and it's more of a housekeeping rule, but I think there's some, some efficiencies also with this. It allows other, you know, I'm not going to call it lame duck sessions, but it is in a sense that if there's something that has to be, business that has to be finished up by sitting counselors, it allows them to do that. Anyways, that's really it.
Great, so that's what we'll be covering and kind of having the public hearing on, on the twenty-second, if this passes, and then it would go to the ballot, correct, is that right?
Yes ma'am, Madam Chair.
Great, we love democracy around here. Any public discussion on this, on setting the date for the public hearing? Okay, nope, other council discussion.
I think it makes a lot of sense and I'll even like go ahead and give you a motion.
Oh, let's hear it, let's hear it, mister.
Okay. I move to set a public hearing date of September twenty-second to consider an act on the proposed amendment to Article Two Town Council, Section Five, induction to, induction to, of office, of, excuse me, induction of council into office of the town charter.
I'll give you a second.
Thank you.
Yep. Excellent, we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
Also, well done.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Okay, next up is new business, we will start with the counselor all the way to my right, who just gave a fantastic motion.
Alright, so we'll start off with the traditional twenty dollars to the food pantry. And just, you know, I guess just a lot of good highlights in tonight's meeting with, you know, the manager's report and the rotary and the visual improvements to Route One Hundred for the safety of the citizens there and the Broad Cove pier extension. So I think, you know, there's a lot of stuff moving in a positive direction. Like I said, I always try to end on a positive note. For those of you out there watching, you know, West Cumberland Community Meeting, Matt and I thought we had a date nailed down of September twenty-ninth and as we looked into a little bit more, there was too many conflicts at the West Cumberland Community Hall building to ensure we'd even have space for people to attend. So, we're back to the drawing board, we'll figure that out and try to get a date out to you folks as soon as we can on that. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Alright, Counselor Thorson.
I'm going to use that super annoying term and piggyback off of what you said earlier about the PML, junk in the trunk slash seasonal holiday decoration swap that is happening on the twenty-seventh from nine to one at PML. But also, they are going to be hosting another repair fair soonish, there's no date on that. But I saw in the newsletter, if you are interested in lending your services and repairing household items or other things that otherwise would have been thrown in the trash, please reach out to Kelly Greenlee and send an email to volunteer your services, I hear the last one was quite successful. Let's see, additionally, talking about bags again, we had talked about bags on and off and I'd mentioned, are we giving them out of the food pantry? Tig, you mentioned that we do, and then we were going to get some extra information because I was curious on how it works, like how many are given out, who gets them, what that process is. I just wanted to know if you have any additional information on details for me? Maybe?
Yeah, so I understand that they don't give out a whole bundle, but there'll be a, a few bags in there as, as needed.
And have we done that for a while already?
I think they've done it for a while.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and part of it is, you know, there are multiple towns that also come through, so there's about, about half, half of the attendee, or half of the, I see the clients are Cumberland residents, so, but they do distribute them as they need.
Cool. Also, thank you to Town Manager Sturgis and other town staff who helped move the massive pieces of equipment from the Tuttle Middle intersection on the edge where they were doing the tree clearing and clearing whatever they need to do for the bridge. They were in a really awful spot that was blocking traffic, like view of traffic altogether, so people were creeping out really far and about to get into accidents on either side of the bridge and additionally, when you're turning onto the one going south into Falmouth, it was very dangerous. But that was quickly remedied when concerned citizens complained to the town manager. So, greatly appreciate that because that was dangerous, but really crazy to see how far along that's come already. It looks like a completely different place, like unrecognizable without all those trees. So, it's great that so much progress is already being made and looking forward to that before we stop going in, because it's crazy out there, dangerous. Last thing, I was creeping on the Yarmouth, Town of Yarmouth's social media and they have a coffee with a counselor. Have we ever done that and would we be interested in doing that?
We used to, at, like, I think it was sometimes leading up to election time, like are you interested in running for office? But I think it might have just been connected to if you're interested in running for office.
Okay.
Not like come to Vail Construction and have coffee with Bob on the job site.
I don't know if I love that. Yeah, but I mean, they have, with Bob, join us for a series of casual, community-focused gatherings where we just sit around for an hour and a half and at the community room and just talk about whatever you want, just drop in, air your concerns.
Do they do like two at a time?
Probably, yeah, on a like a rotation, like once a month or something like that, but I'd be interested in doing something like that if someone else wanted to do with me.
Yeah, I'd be open to, yeah.
Cool, let's do it. You guys?
Yeah.
Bob? Bob?
My job site's always open.
Here, you can move them all yourself now.
Oh my God.
He starts them all.
Really? That's super Lord of the Rings, give that back to you, I can't be trusted with that.
I'd be down, I would just respectfully request that maybe we could have one on a Saturday instead of during the work week.
Oh, yeah, I'd, I'd much prefer that because I can't even find time to eat food during the day anymore.
Same.
Yeah. Meeting Hershey Kisses for dinner.
Yeah.
So, yep, agreed, I think that'd be cool.
Counselor Vail?
So I, I did have two people show up on my job site today, it was kind of interesting, in a Cumberland Fire pickup truck. Two young men from SMTC or whatever the name of that program is now, they, they were interns at the fire department and they had been, I think, had been instructed by their, I think by the, their schooling instructor to go physically to a, a construction site and see what was going on, so we had a nice little chat.
That's awesome.
Or I had a nice little chat and they listened, but.
They find you.
Anyways, I don't have much, I, I did want to speak to Mike and Tig. We had a good meeting at the, at the finance meeting this afternoon and out of that was a, as a concern by most of us about what the tax implication is going to be for next year. And, and so, without taking into account any initiatives, we asked that we see what the number is with our contractual obligations to unions and our, our employees, what that is going to bring for a number for, for next year. And I think it's important that we see that early on because we're planning. So, I'd like to, Mike and Tig, to take that across the street with your Friday meetings with the school board members and ask them to do likewise, and particularly before the October meeting, have that number for us so that we can see what that, that cumulative town and school budget numbers are looking like because I think it's important that we get out ahead of this early this year and particularly if we're going to do any planning for capital improvements and things like that, we need to know what the impact of, of the combined school and municipal budget's going to look like. So if you two can provide some.
Yeah, I'd suggest, we're not, we're not doing any meetings with them right now. So, my suggestion might be that it might be more efficient for Bailey as Finance Chair or someone on the Finance Committee to reach out to Kim Vine, who's the head of the Finance Chair at the SAD. And then you have Finance talking to Finance rather than me being your outside messenger.
Yeah, I can do that.
If you're good with that, I'm good with that.
Yeah, just making myself a note.
Good with that, Bob?
Good with that.
Okay.
Great.
No, I was going to, but decided I'm going to keep my mouth shut.
Do you have something, Jeff?
No, I decided I was going to keep my mouth shut.
Okay, you don't have to.
No, I had something and then I just thought about it and said, I'm going to keep my mouth shut.
Sorry, I shouldn't have said anything.
You tell.
Get mine shut.
It's nothing shocking, I can assure you.
Bailey?
Just to echo Bob's sentiments, we had a nice finance meeting, I just can't reiterate how nice it is to have Helene back in the driver's seat. I think we've been doing a lot of, or she's been doing a lot of. lot of, or she's been doing a lot of, just general, not auditing, but cleanup. And I think it's been good for us to get a better handle on what's going on in general. So that's been nice to have her back. One thing I did want to flag with the, Matt, with the approval of the ship grant, I'm just going to bring this up again. I know I've brought it up 100 times, but the boardwalk plank sponsorships, whatever we got to do to make that happen, to cover the cost, to offset the cost, I think is an incredible opportunity for people to, you know, leave their legacy there or whatever, however we want to frame it. So I want to get ahead of that before it's, like, too far down the road, so.
I could talk with the chief in the morning.
Okay.
And get the Coastal Waters Commission, can, that'd be a good.
I'll bring it up, I'll bring it up at the meeting, too, which is on the 28th of October, but I don't want that to get away from us, because I think that's a good way to cover costs, so.
It would be really nice.
Yeah. I'll be buying a plank, I can tell you that. So, thank you.
Counselor McGee?
I had something that I remember when I was, like, driving and had no way to write it down or anything like that, and it's lost my mind, so.
Was it, because I just thought of something, was it perhaps about the invitation we got from Jesse to go look at that infill-free turf, perhaps, at the celebration they're having coming up? If not, that's a thing. We can see it in the, not the flesh, because it's plastic, but in the plastic, we can.
Is that the 20th, right, December 20th?
The 20th, yep.
Yep.
Yeah, the school's having a large, sort of, ribbon cutting, grand opening type thing.
There's some games going on, too, and stuff.
Yeah. There, I think there's a volleyball game, there's a field hockey game, there's a football game, there's some other game, cookout, and all, for the turf, which looks beautiful. Kids have played on a few games and all.
If that wasn't it, then sorry I even brought it up. But I'd like to see it in larger than a piece that's this big, you know, that we pass around.
But other than that, I've got nothing.
September 20th at 5:30 PM. Counselor Eads?
Just a couple real quick things. If this country's learned nothing else this week, we learned, don't steal a baseball from a kid at a Marlins game. Never would happen a Red Sox game.
Would never, ever.
And speaking of the Red Sox, can you do something? Because Mr. Yale and I have a couple of close friends, including his wife, that are Yankees fans, and we're tired of being a game and a half behind the Red Sox right now.
Me and you both.
So whatever you could do would be much appreciated. The only thing else I have, following up on Jeff's $20, is I'm going to do my annual donation to my first quarter council earnings, 500 bucks to the food pantry for each auction. I want Matt to have a lot of money when he goes. So this is my 13th year donating, and it's all for a good cause. So go get them, Matt.
Thanks, sir.
That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you. Two things. First, I kind of received some feedback from some folks at the Comprehensive Plan that they'd like maybe a little bit more information and more of a kind of practical overview of LD 1829. I would love to do that as a council exercise if there would be some appetite there, so less lawyerly and more practical, if that, do we have any consensus there? Do people feel like they have all the information they need?
I'm on board.
Totally on board.
Yeah.
I could use more edumacation.
Please. I think if we get that person from Greater Polina Council Governor to come in.
Christina Egan.
Program than we do.
Yes, I threw that idea by Matt, and I think we also have our amazing Bridget, who has a lot of really good stuff in the arsenal. Okay, cool beans. So we'll get that on the docket. And then just my second question was, as part of the Comprehensive Plan, and kind of, we're looking at certain things like sidewalks and areas in town where people want to see improvements, would it be possible to get whatever schematic DOT is going to be working with on the Route 100 roundabout included, so that we can factor that in, i.e. knowing what's going to be budgeted for, right, like, in terms of sidewalks and kind of that particular area? I think that would be really helpful for the people on that subcommittee to have that information. Is that possible?
Yes, ma'am, I'd get that by the end of the night, most likely.
You've got until Thursday. Okay.
I'll make sure Bridget has it by the end.
Okay, perfect. And sorry, Denise, my, did you say that there's going to be a seasonal decor swap?
Yeah, part of that junk in the trunk thing is also, you can, like, bring, you know, Halloween or whatever seasonal decor you don't want anymore, you can swap, as long as it's not, like, garbage. It needs to be in good condition. But, yeah, it's a swap of decorations, like lawn decorations and all that stuff.
That's amazing. Thank you very much. Okay, and if no one has anything else?
Sort of, just, the LD 1829, yes. I noticed, because GP Cog had, like, an in-person thing the same night as our last council meeting, that I was bummed that we couldn't just take a field trip. But they did send a follow-up email with a meeting summary and a presentation that was delivered to our council emails. So I don't know if we could take those two bits and forward it on to the Compendent Committee, if that would help them out, although I'm sure it's also on their website, but just in the meantime, as extras. But for sure, we need a deeper.
I think Bridget already sent that along, because I, and I think those materials, and then also just having someone to answer.
Yeah, there's a lot, and there's still a lot that we're waiting to hear back on, right? I think from that guy, Hank, or whoever it was that they were sending all their questions to. Anyway.
That guy.
Yeah, I can't remember his name. Sorry.
Okay.
It's hard being this stupid. All right, I would take a motion to adjourn if there is one.
I'd be happy to give you a motion to adjourn.
Amazing. Second.
Second.
All right, there's, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Unanimous, Brenda. Glad everyone's having a good time. Happy Monday, everybody.